Okay, welcome to the select board meeting for Monday, December 7th, 2020. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, and the governor's March 15th order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the select board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the AG's webpage. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. The town will persevere to use conference call capabilities regularly for other parties to listen and participate accordingly. If not possible, we will post on the town's website an audio recording as soon as possible after the meeting. This meeting is being recorded. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please make it known to the chair. Okay, at this time, I'd like to have a pledge of allegiance. Let's have hope do it. Hope, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight?
Sure. I don't have a flag near me. I have to like-
That's all right. Pretend like it's in the distance.
I can, I can face my front porch where there's a flag.
There you go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic-
To the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Invisible.
Liberty and justice for all.
Well done, Hope. Okay. Public comments. Anyone has any public comments that they'd like to address to the select board? Now's your chance. Hope, you're the only one from the public that's here. You're good. You're good to go. Okay, so we have a payables warrant 2114B dated 11/30 and the amount of $1,431,042.14. And I need a omnibus motion for the revised minutes for November 30th and the November 19th school budget work session.
Joe D. will make the motion?
Russ Fox will second.
Roll call vote. Doug Moglen, aye.
Joe D. aye.
Russ Fox aye.
And we need a motion for the executive session minutes on November 30th.
Joe D. will make that motion.
Russ Fox will second.
Doug Moglen, aye.
Joe D. aye.
Russ Fox aye.
Thank you. Action items. We need to ratify the chair's sign-off of CDC COVID-19 vaccination program agreement, which was executed last Thursday ahead of the Board of Health meeting.
Joe D. will make that motion.
Russ Fox will second.
Doug Moglen, aye.
Joe D. aye.
Russ Fox aye.
Okay, and review of electrical permit fees scheduled for updates. Carl?
Yep, this was submitted to you by the electrical inspector for you to look at the current rate structure in the proposed one. He's going to be coming forward in the next week or two with additional inspectors. As you know, our agreement with Westfield under the IMA is now expiring the end of this month. So the board had asked for him to secure the services of two to three more inspectors. So he's in the process of doing that. And those names will be coming forth to you very shortly. And secondly, this is also to make sure that we keep our stuff up to date and modernized and also where we can begin to make sure that the funds in this revolving account can also pay for the cost of attracting these inspectors because what happened before was we couldn't get any, so we ended up doing an IMA. And secondly, we want to be able to give them tools that will help us integrate with our e-permitting system, including consideration of tablets and other ways so that we can get real-time inspection data back and also allow that to go right into the database in the building department.
Okay, so we'll review this for future meeting, say in a week or two.
Yep, that's your pleasure.
Works for me if he's going to come and join us for a meeting. Some of these are some pretty good-sized jumps.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Fox.
Can we reach out to the building inspector and see where these rates stand with neighboring communities of our size?
Correct. Absolutely.
Okay, made that note.
Thank you. And then we have a 5:35 appointment with the DPW director and attorney Coyle.
Good evening.
How are you?
How are you guys doing?
Good.
Should you be further back then and like have your diplomas on the left and right of you? We had a Zoom meeting.
I'm at home, so those are at the office on my vanity wall at work, but I got my Notre Dame up there.
Okay, fair enough. We were on a meeting the other day and the guy had the whole thing all set up. He was a lawyer. I think he billed us with a square footage of the desk, but it was pretty cool.
I think he billed their client, not us.
I'm sorry, that's fine.
I'll keep that in mind for the future.
Oh, he did. All right, sorry.
It's okay. So we are here today, this evening, in response to some correspondence that the town received from the Department of Environmental Protection regarding the the Southwood Wood Waste Landfill Industrial Road Post-Closure Use and Monitoring. That was sent to Randy after some discussions with various members of the of the Department of Environmental Protection. And Randy and I had a, what I thought was a good conversation with Representative Dan Hall from Mast EP on Friday, who gave us some background into why we received the letter and what the department is looking for going forward. So Randy, if you want to summarize, basically the email that you you had done was a great summary of our discussion, if you want to talk to that.
Yeah, just to give a little, little context, I was approached by DP about a year and a half ago about some issues at the landfill. And this is the brush landfill. So if you drive to the facility on the left-hand side, that open flat area that used to be the landfill, that's all a closed brush landfill. What DP is saying that when that landfill was closed out in the late 80s, early 90s, it was never officially closed out on paper. So there's what's this called, the post-closure use permit that was not filed at that time. And what the DP is now look kind of do is kind of close the books on that. Get all the paperwork in order and and comply with this post-closure use permit. So that's what, what I had sent along to Carl a couple of weeks ago when that permit, that draft permit came in. And then as Ben noted, we had a conversation with Dan Hall on Friday. So to give a little more context on why this is coming up, you know, 30-plus years after the fact. So Dan said that they do a file review on communities every once in a while. And last year, they did a file review on Southwick and they noted that this, this permit was missing. So that's the reason why this is coming up now. We're not the only, we're not the only community that's got, that he's talking to with similar issues. So I don't feel like we're being singled out here. So Dan did say that he didn't think there are any significant issues that at the landfill, they do recognize that the landfill was essentially closed in the late 80s, early 90s in compliance with what terms would have been required at that point. But there were a couple of things that, that they are looking for, that they do require on pretty much every landfill that gets closed moving forward. One of those issues is a, is a continuous groundwater monitoring plan. So that would require the town to install four monitoring wells. One upstream and three downstream of the, the brush landfill. And sample that for a host of potential contaminants and hazardous materials. The regulations require the town to take samples twice a year. Dan did say that after a couple of years, typically they lessen that requirement. So after a few years, you may go down to one sampling per year and then maybe every other year required to take samples. But that's something that, you know, beyond that, we'd be looking to take samples, you know, basically in perpetuity from here on out. Would you have a, yeah, go ahead.
Would, would the, with the cell tower people who also helped trigger this issue, would they have any responsibility on helping to pay for at least one of those wells?
I, we could, we didn't, we didn't talk about that question. I, I think they're looking more at the contents of the landfill. Making sure there's no leachate that's contaminating the groundwater. You know, the-
And also just for clarification, the, the cell tower too is going to have its own similar order.
Oh, they're going to do a separate one for them. Okay.
Correct. And they're gonna-
Yeah, yeah.
The reason why they want to issue, the reason why they want to issue this now is because they want them to be in conjunction with one another.
Okay, I was not aware that they were going to have a separate agreement to handle that monitor.
I thought the cell tower was outside the the landfill area.
It is, it is, but it's on the property and I, you know, DP still has jurisdiction of what happens on that parcel. So what they're looking at, you know, other, you know, quote unquote, changes at the facility. So that cell, that cell tower was constructed in 2007. At that time, the cell tower provider, you know, never went through the same process with DP to permit that use on the, on the property. So this came up with that same file review and they did a site visit at that time as well. So the cell tower provider is going through the same process that we are. They have their own permit that they're going to have to abide by. So I was talking about compost operation. So over the years, we've been running a compost operation on top of that landfill since at least the, the mid 90s. DP is asking for some better cover to protect the landfill contents during those composting operations. So we have a tiller that, that turns over the material. We run that a couple of times a year over the, the compost. They're concerned about that equipment damaging the contents of the landfill. And what they require in other communities is to put a hardened surface over the landfill. That surface could be materials such as millings that are compacted and that provides a cover that DP is looking for.
Randy, is that something that-
There are a couple of other-
Randy, is that something that Crestview could do for us? We have a supply of millings. Could they just put them down there when it's, when it's time and then just, you know, compact them with their equipment?
Yeah, they could. We could also do that ourselves. We do have a pretty healthy pile of millings that we've accumulated over the years. And actually, if you go up to the facility, if you take a look on your left, we've actually kind of done a little bit of work around there in front of the, the oil shed. We put millings down just to kind of, you know, keep the material down. It actually looks very nice. We could continue that across the entire con, the top of that landfill if we wanted to go down that route.
So we could just, we could almost do all that in-house then.
Ourselves.
Yeah, that's good.
Also, we had some piles stored around the landfill over the years, showing that the uses, you know, they weren't, you know, originally in that location, but over the years as our, our facility has gotten bigger, we've had more options, you know, we had to move things around. So DP is looking for an updated site plan, showing where all the piles of the millings are, where the piles of of the debris, where we collect all the recyclables, the new shed that's behind the hopper. So those are things that DP is looking for. So the draft permit that we received had some dates in there and I'll go over the dates. So talking about the hardened surface, they're looking to have that hardened surface in place by September of 2022. And then they want to report with some ASVIL information showing that by November of 2022. There was a stockpile of, of catch basin cleanings. Over the years, we've used that area to stockpile catch basin cleanings along the northwest slope. So that's if you're looking at the cell tower, it's on your left. They want to have that relocated further away from the landfill and have that done by September of 2020, 2022. Sorry about that again. And then the groundwater monitoring, there's some dates for that. They're asking for a scope of work by August of 2021. And then start collecting samples no later than October of 2021. So when we talked about these, these deadlines with Dan Hall on Friday, Dan did say that these are, you know, that they can, they will consider alternative dates. If we want to push back on some of those, if we can provide adequate reason, they'd be willing to, willing to listen to us on those items. And then what else? Looking at my notes here, what else we talked about? We talked about the cell tower. They're going through the same process that we are. So that's it. I mean, so, so I think the way that, that Dan presented it was that, you know, these are primarily paperwork items that need to be addressed and then some conditions that go along with it. Sound like anything, anybody did anything improper? It's just paperwork that, you know, do some file reviews. I had my files, you know, Carl showed me his files over the summer. You know, I'm trying to piece it all together and, and the only thing I could come up with was back in late eight, I think, 1989. Mr. Fox, your name was on some of these paperwork.
I was waiting for it to come up when he said the 80s.
Here.
I knew it was coming up.
Carl, yours is, well, there was, there was a consent. There was a consent order issued to the town in late 80s, early 90s where some of these things are talked about. But I guess at that point, at that time, the town was focused on addressing the items in the consent order and didn't really think about, you know, this post-closure permit that had to be filed. So it's something that the town never followed up on and something that Mast EP also never asked a town to provide. So just kind of hung out there for, for all these years. So I, as Ben noted, I think we had, we had a healthy conversation with Dan Hall. I, I think the, the way he kind of presented it was, you know, we can do this the easy way or we can do this the hard way and regardless, we're going to have to do this. And it provided us a path to do with the easy way. In his mind, this will be the, the costly and the the quickest option to get these back. Dan, as kind of, I think Ben noted, the DP is looking to resolve this issue sooner than later. They do have the cell tower permit that they're trying to wrap up. And because of that, the way that process works, because the cell tower was a, they're a private entity. They, there was a permit fee they had to pay for. There are certain timelines where permits have to be acted upon. And so their Mast EP is at that timeline where they have to act upon a permit for the cell tower. And they want to lump our permit in the same timeline with, with the cell tower permit. So any feedback? I, I think one thing we should talk about is, you know, the deadlines that were proposed in the draft permit. And seeing if we can try to push those back for and I'm sure we can come up with some suitable reasons why.
Just put Russ back in charge of it. He did such a great job 30 years ago. And was this all needed 30 years ago, the same structure? So nothing's, they didn't add any more than they did 30 years ago. They just never finished it.
Yeah, so Dan, Dan did say that these conditions would have been in place 30 years ago.
Right. So Russ, Russ, finish the job this time. Just Russ, work it out with Benjamin Coyle and Randy Brown there. And just deal with it. What's the next item agenda? We don't have time for all this tonight.
I think that's the easiest way to do it. And, and I think that Randy, Russ and I, if we throw some dates out there, I, I think we can get this letter finalized and this approval done this week, which is really what he's shooting for, so.
And with them saying Russ's name on stuff, they'll be thrilled. They, I'm sure they remember Russ. He has that thing about himself.
I think Congressman Conti helped me when we were dealing with this issue some 30 years ago.
Yes, I, I think we should know we have three less congressional districts in Massachusetts. But I believe the chairman should entertain a motion for the board with a roll call vote to designate Mr. Fox as part of that lead.
I will second Joe's motion and call for a roll call vote. Doug Moglen, aye.
Joe D. aye.
One abstention from Mr. Fox.
Russ still ran you over.
Yeah, so, so Russ, we'll be in touch. Dan, Dan did say that if you want to be part of a conversation with him this week, he'd be happy to accommodate that. So
You got it.
We, we can touch base that after, we can touch base tomorrow or whenever at your convenience and figure out the, you know, the next steps here.
Yeah, because Ben said he want, you want that letter out this week, Ben?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'll, Randy, if you want to shoot us an email with some times that you might have or, or I can do that too, we can try to schedule something in the near future.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get an email started. I email but I'll try and minimize the schedule.
Okay.
Did I catch a niner in there? All right, so we'll, we'll do that. We'll, we'll be in touch.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, guys. Always a pleasure.
Talk soon. Thank you.
Bye.
Thrilling. If only we knew anybody at DEP.
Yeah.
He'll, he'll let that go.
I can try calling up Congressman Conti again, but I don't think it's going to work this time.
He won't be down for breakfast?
No.
Uh, new business. We got new business and old business mixed up on here. We usually do old then new. Let's do new business first. Okay, anyone? Carl?
Yeah, a couple of pieces of correspondence. We're fortunate that Randy in the water division have been congratulated Mast EP for an outstanding performance in 2019 on our water system. They received a system that has top compliance on the regional recognition category of the 2020 Public Water Systems Awards Program. So I'm not sure if Randy, if you were aware that we have become a receipt of this letter from them. So you know, you, it looks like you have to send some stuff into them for a montage by December 16th as part of your efforts to modernize our system and, and make it more best management practice and make it more better run than in the past. So congratulations on that, Randy.
Thank you.
See, the next item. Let's see, Massachusetts budget. Of course, they've just finalized the state budget and they're waiting for the governor to sign it. The November revenue collections are tracking ahead of last year's actual, so that's good news. The state's still managing to bring in the money. So, so far fiscal year-wise, we're doing okay there. And then lastly, I believe you might have had advance warning of this, Mr. Chairman, in your meeting with the Board of Health last Thursday evening, where Southwick was put into a effect of today was going to revert to the step of phase three categories. So you all have a copy of what that means for the business sector guidance. And I know Tammy was reviewing it from the Board of Health perspective to see how and where that that phase reversion will work for our businesses.
Correct. The library is the big one. It's a 10% cut of capacity, but the other ones, a lot of the other ones, we don't, we don't tend to have in our town, so we're fortunate.
Yeah, and I think in terms of where our library was, they weren't, they weren't meeting that threshold anyway, so.
Correct.
Was going to double check everything with the librarian. So, and again, this is where over 100 communities are in the, the red category now.
Correct. I don't know if anyone else saw the governor's presser today. He was none too pleased.
I, I did, yeah. He was, he was talking about the the Thanksgiving holiday and how that's going to also contribute to this. And then people were talking to him about the upcoming Christmas holiday.
Well, they, I guess they postpone. DPH put up a postponement of all elective inpatient surgery effective Friday. Right. Keep the capacity available, but yeah, it wasn't a good presser.
They're concentrating on the outpatient. So those are the three items that I had, Mr. Chairman, under new business.
Mr. Diddy?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Fox?
I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
And your, your delegate that you brought earlier in the meeting, he's okay?
I will check. Yes, sir.
Okay. We try to keep it light and in spite of adverse condition, old business. Anyone?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Just continuing the wind down on the punch list on the fire station project, they're coming out. The designer is coming out on Wednesday to do some additional site visit work in terms of seeing where things stand, but it looks good. If you drive by there, you see it. And the other thing I'm going to be doing is I've asked him to review the town hall roof in terms of following up on our recommendations by tie and bond to begin the process of planning that in the future. So, because that roof was put on in, let's see, 1996 in that area. So that, that's about 24 years old now. So give it a couple of more years of planning and votes and by the time the work happens and it's, it's going to have to be addressed. And I know we, we won't want to do that kind of work on our building during a presidential election year.
Way to plan ahead.
Yep. That's what I had there.
Anyone else have any other old business?
Just have two things. I'd like to mention that the animal control got their new shed. And the other sheds were moved down to the transfer facility. The lions are going to be working on converting one of the sheds because we're hoping to get more of the returnables out of the recycling stream. So they're going to be working on that. So thanks to the DPW and Police Department and the Animal Control for all their hard work. I know we made a donation to help out, but all the other money was donated to achieve this. And the other thing I had, Mr. Chairman, is that we were talking about doing some sort of holiday meal thing. Passing out the meals. So I don't know now that we're in a higher state, whether we still want to go through with that or we want to think about maybe just holding off till next year.
Tough call. My inclination would be to hold off, but I'll defer to you guys on what you think.
I would agree. There's enough stuff happening. We don't, we don't need to help anyone else out in, in that respect, right? Let's all stay safe and just make it work. We can do something in the spring.
Yeah.
You know.
Maybe once, you know, you get your vaccination, come over and, you know, have a hamburger, right? I don't know, whatever.
A twofer, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Sounds reasonable.
Shot a dog. Here you go. I don't know, whatever the right answer is. But yeah, that's my inclination right now. I mean, we've been I know I've talked to Carl about it at length. We've been making a little bit of Carl and I have been talking and with, and Carl's been talking to Tammy and anyone else about, you know, additional contingency planning around continued operation of government. If, if we have an issue at town hall or certain employees- um operation of government, if if we have an issue at town hall or certain employees are affected or what have you, and how we're gonna be able to continue to you know, do what we need to do for our our constituents in um through the end of this, because it's not getting any better, right? I think the the analogy I heard was, you know, three months ago or four months ago, everyone knew somebody who knew somebody who had who had this or has gone through it or has been touched by it. Now you know somebody directly, right? Whether it's your neighbor or your friend or or yourself, you know, whatever. But it's gotten, it's it's hit a lot closer and, you know, we expect it to continue um unabated until, you know, a vaccine finally becomes available. And we were running what you know, I expect the case, I personally expect the cases to tail back down now that we're ten days post Thanksgiving, but we were pegging five thousand cases a day in Mass for a pretty good few days there, and now they're dropping back down a little bit, but still absurdly high, right? So we just got a plan, right, and just deal with it as it comes. Obviously, you know, thank goodness, they've gotten better treatments and better uh courses of action for people that have it to to try to limit the spread and treat the people who do get it. And so the the mortality does seem to be dropping quite a bit, and then there's also the morbid thought of, you know, frankly, some of the people who would be mostly badly affected by it, got it, right, and have have been through it. Um so we'll just have to keep an eye on it and um you know, but plan for the, you know, hope for the best, plan for the worst, right? So um Carl and I have been talking about a lot of that and trying to to keep things going in that regard, and he's been doing a great job of it.
Yeah, I mean, some of these things we're gonna identify that need to be done. They they have been being done, and they're, um some of them are COVID reimbursement eligible. So and that's the position we're taking, and uh obviously, we're uh gonna be in the process of getting back to FEMA on the information they need. And again, as I've said to people before, in writing several times, whatever is disallowed by them, we're going to go through the CARES Act at the state level to um balance out what we cannot uh secure through the federal government through the federal funds given to the state government.
Right.
And so all of that has come out, all those guidelines and processes are out now, so we're in the process of working with our team to put all of that together and respond. The only outstanding issue we're gonna have is probably what the school district would like to do, and they're going to be giving me something the middle of this week, and we're gonna be reviewing that for your approval next Monday's meeting, so we'll probably invite them in on your agenda, Mister Chairman.
Great. And I mean, just and to be upfront, I mean, anything, any expenditure type stuff, none of them are deal breaking. A lot of it's just planning, right, and and better use of funds that we have already budgeted for, right, and so instead of buying this, we're gonna buy this or it's, you know, in the same realm, but just to make sure that um you know, and if everything does fall apart with CARES Act and the other the other deal that, you know, we're not left holding the bag for a hundred grand worth of expenses is nothing like that.
No, we've already, we have already received two rounds of of uh state reimbursement already.
Correct. So I just
We do not have large exposure.
There's no budget busting number there that says, oh, you know, we had to do this, so we did this, and we're on the hook for, you know, X hundred thousand dollars, nothing like that.
Nope, I'd say the biggest thing we had to do was issues relating to the duct and vent cleaning in the buildings.
So. So all I got. Anyone else before we move on to executive session?
Yeah, we actually don't. Uh we will not need to have one of those in terms of um of where we are with certain issues. Uh those issues are gonna be um carried forward to next week, where we will have that with Labor Council in certain departments present.
So you mean this meeting's over in thirty-five minutes?
Uh it's your prerogative, Mister Chairman.
Oh, I heard Joe's motion already.
I heard Russ second it.
I'm
Doug Moglen, aye.
I'm here, so.
Joe DeeDee, aye.
Rustback's aye.